Like the microphones are working. All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Councilman DeWitt, if you'd lead us, please, in the pledge.
Sure, my pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we know that Councilman Schleck is going to be a few moments late, but roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba? Here. Councilman DeWitt?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Gren?
Here.
Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
Here. Okay, public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to make a comment at this time, please come up. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Counsel. I'm John Pano, I represent the Downtown Alliance. I'm coming here today and speak on behalf of the Alliance and members of the Alliance on the tree, trees that will be planted along the new strip of redevelopment along Old 41. We had a couple of requests, suggestions, or observations, however you like to put it. One is the deciduous trees, the trees that drop their leaves periodically, cause extra cost for the merchants and the city in the long run, just in hiring people to keep the streets clean and to blow the leaves around and maintain the appearance of a clean street. Second, the cost and damages to sidewalks and streets from the roots of these trees, after a period of time, you have to go in and remove the trees and remove the roots and redo the sidewalks. Third, one of the big facts along this corridor in particular is they obscure the fronts of the buildings and the signage that's on and in the buildings. It's especially perplexing to the merchants along this corridor because we aren't allowed to fly like flags or banners that say "Open" and things like that. So the trees are really obscuring our businesses. And fourth is the fact that we would like to be unique from a lot of the developments and things that are going on now. And we would like to look more like the old Florida, historic Florida of times with the Palm Line Streets. That's about all I have to say, and I thank you for listening to me.
Great, thank you, John.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Steinmeier. You've got a projection for the payback on this project of 5% a year. And I took the numbers that were in this, on page six. And in four years, you're looking at a 56.6% increase in the property values. I don't know if that's 14% a year. And I'm wondering whether 5% a year, in the long run, is a realistic number as far as the increased property value of that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else from the public? Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Bob Fennis, and I'm at the Tree Advisory Board, and there has been some discussion, I understand, about some of the vegetation along the Old 41 corridor. So we looked at some possible changes in any trees that you want to make. I guess there's been some concern over the understory of the trees that would block signage and identification for the regular businesses. So we came up with some possibilities for you. One would be the Jamaican Dogwood. It's a very good tree in terms it has less intrusion, in terms of its structure. You'll get more clear understory, higher canopy, probably give you some good clearance for the signage. The other tree is a Blahley Tree. The third one would be a Paradise Tree. Our particular request, not request, but our particular tree that we like would be the Jamaican Dogwood. It's very sturdy, and it's a native tree, so shouldn't have any issues. In terms of palms, some of the palms you have out there right now are probably satisfactory for what you want. They give you some tropical feeling. We have some other ones, we have the Bismarck Palm, the Canary Island Date Palm, and there's some other palms. I can have the Tree Board send you a list, if that's what you would like.
Please.
If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, thank you very much, we'll get with you after, and please do send in those recommendations.
Surely, I'll give you some specs on it, too.
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you very much. Anybody else from the public at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to discussion of downtown. Carl, you want to get us started here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. Couple of things happening this morning, finishing up on some of the infrastructure and of course, the tree discussions from the last time we met, and also getting into the financial aspects of the downtown. We are, I know, extremely limited on time this morning, so we'll get moving right away. So Matt?
Good morning, Counsel, my name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director. I'm just going to keep it quick and introduce Tom Barber from Agnoli Barber &amp; Brundage to pick up where we left off to discuss stormwater, the stormwater permit, as well as the functionality and some of the costs associated with it. And then we'll move into some new things that we found out about the bridge for consideration by Counsel, and then finish up with talking about what we've discovered in terms of some landscaping options for the Counsel to consider.
Great, thank you, Matt. Good morning.
Good morning, Tom Barber, Agnoli Barber &amp; Brundage. So as Matt said, these are what we're going to go over this morning, drainage, Imperial River Bridge, and landscaping options. So this slide shows the conceptual permit boundary, which is the black boundary to the north. It extends to Rosemary, to the south, 41. The white boundary is the actual drainage basin that the stormwater within the system outfalls through. The stormwater management system is made up of four different outfalls, three to the Imperial River and one to Oak Creek. Purvous paver parking detail is the main water quality treatment source for this project. It's made up of a rock trench system, a perforated pipe, which forces the stormwater to percolate in through the soil. The exfiltration trench volume totals 121 acre inches, which if you look at it over the entire stormwater basin is about an inch for the whole area. The available credits associated with that are directly related to the water quality and the nutrients that will be removed from the system, and those amount to 243 kilograms per year of nitrogen, 43 kilograms per year of phosphorus. The total project cost is about 6.33 million for the construction costs related to this. Here's a cost breakdown. The water quality portion, which is made up of exfiltration trench, pervious pavers, inlets and manholes totals approximately 1.2 million. The conveyance system, which is the pieces that get the water into the water quality system, made up of reinforced concrete pipe, inlets and manholes, curb and gutter, totals approximately 2.1 million. The restoration or rebuild of the project, which is basically to put this system into an existing site, it includes asphalt, basin subgrade, sidewalk and driveways, totals roughly $3.3 million. So the subtotal for the construction costs, 6.33 as stated before. And then also included in the cost is the design and survey, construction engineering inspection. Each of those roughly $280,000 for the design survey, $261,000 for the CEI. So the grand total of $6,877,231. So here's a quick example of a one-acre parcel. This particular parcel is undeveloped, so it's all pervious area right now. If a developer came in and put an improvement on this parcel, the water quality breakdown allows them to build up to 95% in pervious area. So if you take the buildings, the parking lot, the sidewalks, all the improvements that you would normally see, they only need 5% of green space to have a pre-verse post scenario work with the water quality we provided. So taking that example into consideration, it would use about 2% of the available total credits for the entire project, given that it's an undeveloped parcel. Now typically, these parcels are developed or do have some improvements on them, and in that scenario, they would only use 1% of the available credits. So, any questions related to the water quality portion?
Counsel, any questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
This is helpful, Tom, thank you. Just real quick, so when you take your bank and you've got, what, two areas down there? One is, what do you call, the broader area, and you call the capture, what's the broader area?
Black versus white. The black is the conceptual permit boundary, so the stormwater permit that you have.
Right, you can use that.
That is the boundary for that permit.
Right, so you can use it in that area?
Correct.
Right, okay, so you have a ballpark estimate for, just on your rough back-of-the-envelope math, the acreage downtown within, let's call it the work area?
Right.
How much free board is there over on top of that coming out of the credits that you have?
So the drainage basin is about 120 acres.
Okay.
So you have about one inch over that whole area that you're storing.
All right, but you gave an example, it's 120 acres, so you gave an example of a one-acre parcel developed using 1%, undeveloped using 2%?
Correct.
So, does that mean that pretty much these credits will be used up in that, what did you just say, 120 acres?
Correct, well, if that 120 acres was built out.
Okay, and the 120 is what, Tom? The 120 acres is an estimate of the space where, not on Old 41, it's?
It's the drainage basin boundary, so all the water that flows into the stormwater system.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's obviously outside of US Old 41, it goes over.
Right, yeah, there are portions that are outside of the improvement area.
Right, all right, that's helpful, thank you.
Sure.
You know what, it might be helpful, can you just kind of point out those roads a little bit?
Point out the roads?
Well, I'm sorry, within the drainage basin area?
Okay, so here's 41 right here. Sorry, Old 41.
Old 41, right.
How many acres are on, however you want to do it, in space, on Old 41 and Feltz, let's say? In other words, the central area, however you want to define it? The central area where all the work's being done, where we're looking for the real development? Any idea of that?
I think Matt would probably know better, Matt, do you have an idea?
I have a guesstimate.
Oh, good.
But our blocks are roughly two-acre blocks.
All righty.
So.
Can you borrow your pointer there, Tom?
So if you count the area, this is Old 41, this is Feltz.
Yeah.
So if you count this out, you've got roughly about 14 acres right here.
All right.
In this stretch.
Between the two streets?
Between the two streets, yes, sir.
Right.
So it gives you, you know, a sense of where that is.
Yeah, so there is free board in this credit thing?
Yes, yes, there is, if that is the area that you're focused on folks plugging into the system, there certainly is free board. It's essentially designed to be able to be utilized across that entire black boundary.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Matt. Counsel, any more questions, comments? Mike, Steve, no? Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, my name's Andy Powell with Ray Construction. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Imperial River Bridge, and let's make sure I got this correct here. There we go, back to that. And what we found out about some ideas brought forward by Counsel and discuss a little bit of that. Don't want to go into rehashing a whole lot of what we did in the past, but basically, we're charged with creating an aesthetic effect, a focal point in the project with the Imperial River Bridge, and we're also charged with trying to keep that budget below $1 million or at that $1 million level, providing a decorative finish, an open railing effect to the bridge, and providing lighting as well as landscape and planter hangers to help with that aesthetic effect. We did bring along today an example of the Tabby Stucco that will be the finish of the columns and the side of the bridge. This, when I get to that, I can show you where that'll be applied. The original concept, again, was to widen the bridge. We've abandoned that concept because of cost, and we're working with the alternative concept of using the existing bridge and rehabilitating the existing bridge to bring in this aesthetic effect. So you'll notice we're dealing with 51 feet out to out on the bridge, which will provide us with two eight-foot sidewalks on each side, two 11-foot travel lanes, a minimum traffic separator, as well as two-foot shoulders on each side of the road. Now.
And that difference in cost is $1,004,000, is that right?
The difference in cost of the wider, going to the wider bridge.
Versus, correct.
Down to this is approximately $1,004,000.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. So our original concept was to use an open railing system, a cable railing system, and we were asked to do two things by Counsel. One of those things was to look into using glass railing, and the second one was to be able to create more bridge deck area, sidewalk area, by cantilevering the handrail off to the side. We did look into both, and I've got comments on both, but these pictures kind of give you what the aesthetics will look like on the bridge with either the glass railing or the cable railing. I've got a few other pictures that we'll see here in just a minute, but it gives you kind of an idea of what the aesthetic effect will look like and that we can maintain within the budget. I'm going to talk about the cantilevering first. Vince, who was here last meeting to talk about, he's our structural engineer, bridge engineer, did come back yesterday with good news on the cantilevering, saying that we would be able to cantilever up to 18 inches on each side of the bridge if we were able to use lightweight concrete for the sidewalks and the columns, as well as the curbing, which we can do. It increases costs a little bit, it's not a significant cost impact, but gaining 18 inches on that deck is a big deal and a very good recommendation that we can accommodate. However, with that recommendation, we cannot use the glass rail, because the glass rail adds weight as well as wind loading to the bridge that we couldn't accommodate with the lightweight concrete. Now, as it relates to the glass railing, that would be kind of an if-or situation. If you like the glass railing effect, that could be used. We just couldn't use it on the cantilever deck, and we'd have to maintain that 50, 51-foot width and eight foot on each side for the sidewalks.
And just real quick, with the glass railing, I see, what are those, every four feet or six feet, maybe?
Wait, I don't think we've gotten that far, but probably you're going to have vertical posts every six.
And that would be necessary?
Absolutely.
As opposed to the, what do I want to call it, the waterfall effect, just plain glass? That probably wouldn't work?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
These are some pictures of, this is downtown Fort Myers, the cable railing. This is a project we did for the city of Fort Myers, this is an example. I had told you, everybody, that we would be bringing a mock-up example today, we do not have that. We, our fabricator brought up.
Demerits.
Yeah, well, let me explain. It's still demerits, I'll give you that, but I'll tell you what, our fabricator did bring it over for us to take a look at yesterday, and they did such a bad job on it, I wouldn't bring it down here, so.
Okay.
We just.
You're excused.
Quality issue. So, but any rate, this will give you an idea of the difference between the cable railing and the glass railing. One thing I want to mention, though, is what these pictures don't depict is there is still a vehicle railing that's on the outside of the shoulder between the pedestrian rail and the roadway. That is up to 30 inches tall, it will be, it's a custom fab railing. It is not the typical, what you're going to see in FDOT-type bridges, but a custom fabricated railing that's very aesthetically pleasing. So with that being said, I'll entertain questions and hopefully get some direction on what y'all would like to see.
Counsel, Councilman Forbes?
Yeah, I have a question, that is, with the lightweight concrete and going with the cable rail, you can go 18 inches by cantilevering actually the sidewalk off the?
Yes.
If you were to go with the glass rail, is there, can't you at least cantilever eight inches or a foot?
I'd have to take that back to our design consultant.
My guess is you probably should, I mean, could, and so I just, is there any difference, significant difference in cost between the glass rail and the cable rail?
I don't have enough, we've gotten one quote on the glass rail, just to give us an idea if it would fall within the ballpark. I'm not comfortable with the number we got, because I don't have any engineering on it to say that that's, but it doesn't appear to be a significant cost increase, although potential cost increase for the redesign and the engineering as well as the glass. We did discuss the pros and cons of the glass railing compared to this, and, you know, breakage, maintenance, there's some concerns on using the glass rail that we haven't really vetted that at this point in time, but certainly things that when you're considering, you can, they're pretty simple to pick out what those concerns might be.
Right, right. Fred? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just going to make one, if I had, I think it's truthfully more important that those walks be as wide as they can be, because there'll be people fishing off that bridge, biking, sometimes both directions, and walking, and then you've got the kids effect, so.
Right.
If I had to pick one or the other, I'd go for the wider walks.
Skateboards, segways, whatever else might be floating around.
That's right. Segway man.
Reference to Mike Gibson.
Uh, Mike, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
On the glasses, it actually glass, or is it plexiglass?
No, it's glass.
Maybe because I've seen other instances where, I guess it's plexiglass and people carve into it.
Correct.
I've seen a lot of vandal issues with glass before.
It, I think it'd be more appropriate in another location personally, but we're here to build what you like.
And how thick is that glass?
That's one of my problems, that I'm not, the, it was half-inch plate? Or half, not plate, but half-inch tempered glass. And that hasn't been run through engineering at this point, so I don't know that that's, would be the end product.
All right, and Pete, or Mike, anything else?
No, I'm with Fred, I'm for wider with the cable instead.
Right. Pete?
Just wondering, Carl, what staff view is?
Well, Matt's going to come up and give you his view, and then I'll give you my view. I'm assuming it may well be the same, but go ahead.
180 degrees, no?
Most likely not. The concern would be some of the issues about feasibility, you know, with the design, but really, it's maintenance. The concern would be if it's tempered glass, at some point, somebody will vandalize it, and it will be a fairly emergent condition at that point, because you'll have a free communication with the bridge deck and the water. And so that weighed against, as Councilman Forbes pointed out, the width, this additional 18 inches of width really gets us back to the original intent of the wider bridge deck. You get pretty darn close to what those original designs were, and really increases the mobility for folks using the space. So our recommendation would be to continue with the cable stay railing.
Okay. Carl?
And I agree with Matt. How about that?
Well said, Matt.
I think it makes sense to go wider and keep the cable.
Yep, yep.
Great. Steve, down the center, comments, thoughts, Greg, Amy?
No, I was concerned about the maintenance, and I would be in favor of the cable, and certainly the width is very important.
We don't want any free communication.
Yeah, free communication with the, yeah, right.
I do have one last question.
Uh, Fred, go ahead, yes.
Are you sure that you, that there is a code that requires that those cables be, what was it, three or four inches?
I think it's four, but I can double-check with our consultants, but I'm fairly certain that is correct, yes.
I know on buildings there's such a thing, but I wasn't sure if it exists.
It's all related to the drop-off behind the distance of the drop-off behind the rail.
Yeah.
And I can't remember the exact code, but I'm fairly certain, but I'll verify it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Counsel, anything else?
That's good.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Kevin Mangan with Stantec. And I'm going to follow up here with the landscape conversation. And here you have what is basically the original concept plan that truly is today being installed, if you will, in the project. And what you have in this plan, and these are the plans that came to many of the public meetings that we had in design of this project, is a mix. You see a number of palm trees, palm trees here in the sable palm, and our oak trees, which we're focused on today. What we had done previously, and what we had seen in really the design and the development of this project, is we had visited many communities, you know, Fort Lauderdale, Los Olas Boulevard, Hollywood, with, actually, it's angled parking in streets and landscape, and then also Fifth Ave in Naples, and this is one of the places that you had asked us to take a look at. And so we had done that, again, last year in the development of this project. You'd asked us to take a little further look. Fifth Ave was one of the locations, and it obviously has remained the same, is a mix of landscape. Sarasota, we took a look at a couple of places, Main Street as well as St. Armond Circle, really the, sort of a mix of landscape here, palms and trees. Here, a much heavier tree and canopy feel in Main Street downtown. Jupiter was one of the locations here at Abacoa, really a dominance of the palm tree, and the understories here, Crete Myrtle. This is a mix, but the formality of that street really is played through with the palms. And Weston was another place in town center there. Again, a strong formality of the palm, and a heavy trunk palm down the edges, and then the street tree and the canopy tree is made integral to, but less the dominant form, if you will, the street edge. So with that direction, we've taken a look at the plans as they existed and have made modifications as such. And there's three colors really here in terms of the trees and palms. The darker green is the oak tree locations. The lighter green and yellow, what we are doing here is we're saying, we're proposing in these areas where there are oak trees, if you're close here, you could actually see that the oak tree symbols are still behind on the plan, but we colored the yellow palm on top of it. What we're saying is, is let's remove those oak trees for palm trees. Now what we're doing is we're reducing the number of oaks in the project, and this is the core part of downtown, and maintaining some of the street trees. And most of that street tree involvement on 41 is around the intersections. Here, it's some mid-block crossings on Reynolds and Childers, and a bit on Ragsdale. And then again, on Feltz Ave, you'll see the mix, which is unique, because Feltz was not a mix. Feltz was simply street trees, simply the oak tree. And now we're mixing that, but maintaining some of those oaks in this modified. And now we're mixing that, but maintaining some of those oaks in this modified proposal, again, for some of the shade characteristics and other things. On the south end of the project, the same is true. Interestingly enough, the four side streets here are all palm trees. So again, we're looking at the identification of intersections. Oak Creek Bridge, this is a little bit unique as there's a large stand of oaks here, so we're working with that. And then again, you'll see on Felt's Ave, the introduction of the palm tree. What those modified plans represent are a number of things. On Old 41, where we have 300 trees and palms in the project, currently 60 of those are oak trees. This modified plan removes 30 of those oak trees and in place of that, those yellow symbols that we were representing, added 58 palms back in their place. On the side streets, we have 144 trees and palms, proposed 28 of those are the oak. We've removed four in the modified plan and replaced those or suggest replacing those with 11. And on Felt's, where we were all oak trees, at 42, we've removed 11 and introduced 39 palms for those oaks. What the modified plan represents is a 50% oak tree reduction on Old 41. Thirty-five percent oak tree reduction across the entire project. It does maintain the urban street form with a mix, as originally proposed, of oaks, accents, and palms. We maintain the oaks in areas of shade and structure. Too small of a plan to see, but usually in relationship with those oak trees, there's a bench, a proposed bench location, I should say. So again, some of the pedestrian comfort had talked to before. The north of the Imperial River Bridge, which is a rather unique cross-section on Old 41, there are no oak trees. And this is purposely why I didn't represent that in plan form. It's all palm trees. Part of the reason it's all palm trees is that most of that is an open curb cut for parking. There's just very limited space there. And where we do find space, we're simply using the palm tree. And what we...
I think that was kind of with that Abacoa over in Jupiter. You were tight on space on that one example, so they kind of went up.
They were, exactly. And what they have there and we don't have, and so the landscape provides the architectural form, if you will, when it's installed on day one here, they had the building form, the four and five floors to deal with, and they went vertical and narrow.
Right.
Exactly right. So the modified landscape plan also, you know, we had said to ourselves is if we step back and look at this, maintain our mix, but mix it differently, adding palms and removing oaks. We think what we're representing here, we can do at basically no net cost. In other words, the palms that we're looking at to replace the oak trees, they are in the job. The Montgomerys and the Sables, move those in and out as appropriate. We haven't determined exactly where yet, but we can do that in a mix at the price point that those cost the job and at the same price point that the oaks that we're removing. The other two options that we think are viable, leaving the modified plan, if you will, adopting the modified plan, and now saying we have, I forget the number exactly, but I think it was 85 oak trees left in the project. If we were to replace all those oak trees and understanding that where we've left them in the plan are forming structure at intersections primarily and casting shade on the parking of 41 or on Felt's, excuse me, what are legitimate landscape options to replace those then in their entirety? And the first, actually, we're already using in the project, and that's the Sylvester Palm. And this is actually an early installation of here on the project. And rainy day in Coral Gables, but here you see a Montgomery Palm, a street line, and then the Sylvester again at the corner on the end cap. The other option we're looking at and recommend is the Bridle Veil Tree. Interesting tree. It's more vase-shaped in its growth, an interesting bark. And also in Coral Gables, Montgomerys leading to this tree form. And you see this car crossing down out in front. That is, that tree actually is at the intersection again. So representative of, if you will, what it is we're talking about with the modified plan is the point of 85 oaks. Are we going to leave those oaks at no net cost or are we going to replace those as well? The options do come at a cost. And with the remaining oaks and the option cost, which removes the oak tree, but the two trees that we're speaking of, the palm and the tree that we're speaking of, have a greater cost. These costs get spread out along Old 41, roughly about a $50,000 adjustment, about a $40,000 adjustment on the side streets if we replace all the oaks there, which 24 would remain after the modified plan. And Felt's Ave still has 31 oak trees on it in the modified plan, and again, it's a little over $50,000 adjustment. In total, if we took the oaks out and use these optional trees and the Bridle Veil here by spec, 16 feet, which is four feet lower than the oak tree, and this Sylvester Palm spec is actually what we have on the job. These are, this is the range we would expect that those costs will be for a total removal of the oak tree from the modified plan. So it's sort of a two-step presentation here, presentation to a modified plan, and then from there, we've reduced the oaks. If we took the oaks out, we would be left in essence here.
Kevin, thank you. You lost me a little bit, not because of your presentation, but you presented a lot. So the step one leaves some oaks in and replaces them with what?
The oaks don't get replaced in step one.
Oh, they don't?
Right. But what happens is we commit to remove 30 of the 60. So what we're left with on 41 in this case would be 30 oaks.
And they get, when they're removed, they get replaced with what? Palms?
And then these 30 that get removed get replaced with palms.
Okay. And step two or those other two concepts?
Step two then says if I want to deal now with the leftover oaks.
Right.
Here are a couple of options.
And that would be the Bridle Veil and the other one you mentioned?
Or the Sylvester.
Sylvester, okay, thank you.
Well, I'm for step two along Old 41, just get rid of all the oaks on Old 41. Keep them on the other two, the side streets and, I don't know, Felt's. But for the businesses, I'd say no oaks on Old 41.
For visibility purposes and probably sidewalk, right?
Visibility, pulling up the sidewalks and also just the mess with the leaves.
Right, and the mess with the leaves.
Mainly the mess with the leaves and the visibility.
So let me clarify what I'm hearing then from you, is that you also wouldn't choose the Bridle Veil Tree, you would choose the palm tree?
Yeah, the Sylvester.
Is that what I hear?
Correct. I like the look of the Sylvester on the intersections.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
I'm not sure I agree with that. In your first step, you had taken everything except the corner oaks out, correct?
That's right. That's the general framework.
So the thing, so that on the corners, it probably, a tree there would probably not interfere with the retail space there because the stores don't go directly to the corners, right?
Some will clip their corners, but I agree with you.
But it basically would be on the corners.
Yeah, what our sense is, is a little more space there.
And could you also just give us a little information about the Bridle Veil Tree in regard to how the shape of it, does it impinge onto the sidewalk and everything?
No, it... So here is a young Bridle Veil, and here's the older one in the street in Coral Gables. So you can see the top of the automobile in terms of where it's growing now and its limbs, so it's up above any of the pedestrian way.
So it's less dense than an oak?
It's less dense, excuse me, dense than an oak. It's sort of a feathery.
Feathery. And does it have, what, the leaves, do they sort, are they a problem on the sidewalk or do they just blow away because there's...
They'll blow away. They're a lighter, yeah. And then this is interesting bark of the trunk. But here, to I think more specifically answer your question, the general shape of this is a vase-shaped. So it's not round, it's not vertical, it's sort of this midpoint. And just as a description, we would call that a vased shape, habit of growth.
And would there be any problem aesthetically of putting, of using those on the Old 41 corridor and then keeping the oaks on the other parts of the project?
No. I think it still accomplishes the same, yeah.
I'm not sure that the nature of what Old 41 looks like would be aesthetically, well, it would be compatible with just the palm trees there, I think, because they're not, it's not a terribly formal look to the stores along there. So I think that's something a little more casual and softness would be good personally. But this is a matter of taste, I think, so... But I would think the Bridle Veil would be a better look there down on there, and it would provide the shade at least everyone's in a while. And I think you could really define the corners. That's why I like your plan there where you have something different on the corners where the intersections, so that I like that plan.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amy. Anybody else? Peter? Then Fred.
Kevin, from a design perspective, what is your view of what we should be doing? What would look best?
I would, personally, I would stay with a mix on Old 41. And what we've done is we've brought it very succinctly down and limited it very specifically to these corners with the Bridle Veil in place of the oaks. And I think that's a good direction.
Fred? Go ahead, Mike, I guess.
I might just say, ask each individual business that you're going to be putting one in front of what they prefer. Because, you know, in the middle where Riverside Park is and the Vannion Tree on the other side, obviously, there's no businesses there. But, you know, as you head north, you've got one right in front of Fidelity Real Estate, you've got one right in front of Benson's right midway, and as it grows out, that's a pretty wide tree. And then going the other way, you know, there's going to be other businesses that they're going to be right in front of. And Gibbs' presentation said, do not put any trees in front of a business, so.
One of the things to look to counsel for is direction, and it's not that working with individual businesses is a bad thing. I think what we want to put forth is a unified street. And so if the choice is Bridle Veil and the Sylvester's, I think that's as fine a choice as well. It's, I understand, I heard, you know, the presentation. I'd hate to have it be a bunch of individual choices, if you will, up and down the street. I think you want a unified street is really the goal.
Mike, Fred?
Well, I'd lean towards palm trees, but we do need some other than palm trees at key points such as the intersection. If you just have all palm trees, it's going to become somewhat boring. It'll just look like a long tunnel. One question I was going to ask is Sylvester palms, are they, how are they on drop and prong versus the others? Because that's the one hazard with palm trees, which I'm not against a palm, but that is a, if a pedestrian or a bicyclist gets whacked with one or the hood of a car, it's going to...
It's a good question. They're a lot lighter than the palm tree, which is wonderful, graceful, but is the culprit of that is the royal palm. And we haven't recommended royal palms for that very reason.
Right.
Great, thanks. Counsel, any other questions? Comments? Okay. Carl, go ahead.
If I might ask a question, Kevin, there's a concern, obviously, about visibility to the businesses from vehicles and I guess pedestrians as well. What is the distance between these, typically the distance between these trees when they're planted? Say, for instance, in front of a business.
Well, right now, we're dealing with, anywhere's from, and most of them are now corner conditions, but you're 12 to 15 feet would be my approximation on those corners. What happens is when you move to the mid-block positions, you necessarily, rather than being on the diagonally, you come a little closer to the building. That's where the, as the mayor mentioned about Abacoa, the palm becomes a much more, a better choice, simply because you are a little narrower.
And in terms of being in a vehicle or a pedestrian, people would be able to see the businesses?
I believe so. I do.
Okay. So does counsel have a particular direction as to what you want us to do? Because we've heard a number of different things.
I'd like to suggest going forward with what Kevin has suggested, and in that context, accommodate Mike's point as much as possible. So you want a cohesive, what I hear you saying is you want a cohesive unified design. You think this will be a cohesive unified design. There's a concern about blocking views and take that into account as much as possible without cracking the unified design. Is my suggestion.
Mike, any other thoughts on that?
Well, you know, especially Wilson to Reynolds, I would rather not see the Bridle Veil or the oaks. I'd be much happier with the Sylvester palms on those four corners there. Like I said, I'm no problem with it in the park, just south of the park. I guess it'd still be all right there because I know that other side property has a lot of deciduous trees on it. You don't have anything around the roundabout, so it's not until you get south of that.
Yeah, the roundabout is actually all palms.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the businesses that are on those other intersections. But like I said, I just know Wilson to Reynolds, it would impede at least two directly and then possibly a third, so.
And one last question, counsel, for clarity, this is on Old 41 only?
That's my feelings, yeah. Going to option two.
So the side streets and Felt's would stay with an oak tree?
Well, whatever your presentation was.
Right.
Okay. Do we have consensus here?
Yeah.
From counsel?
I think so. Amy, is that okay?
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah, that's fine.
Steve? Pete?
You clear?
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Fred, go ahead, yes.
I wanted to ask a question on the bridge, real simple. Is there any problems with the lightweight concrete on wear and tear? Does it need sealing? Is there anything you can do to put extra durability in the surfaces?
I don't know.
Simple answer.
Let me get you an answer to that question. We've used lightweight concrete on bridge decks before. It's, I have not ever heard of an issue with that, but certainly let me get you an answer to that question.
Well, that's the best answer. And it could be that they apply some kind of sealant and stuff that penetrates in and makes it less porous and more durable.
Several bridges that we've done for Lee County in the past used lightweight concrete on the deck. I don't remember a sealant being applied to it, but certainly, let me check on that.
The deck receives more wear and tear than the walks will.
Yes, yes.
So you convinced me.
Okay, in the time we have left, I'm sorry.
Counsel, anything else? I was going to say, I don't think we could, yeah, I think we should take a break, although the finances are very important. We're going to have to get to the finances and go through them. And unfortunately, we have nine minutes, so.
Did we conclude that what we're doing on the bridge and then rail, are we going with the cable and the lightweight?
Is that okay, Kate? Spend a few more minutes on that? Well, it's an important decision. Yeah, I think we're fine there, Fred. Any other comments on that, though, Fred? Because now is obviously the time. Okay. We have eight minutes. We have finances. So what do you recommend, Carl?
I really don't know at this point. Counsel's pleasure.
Can I suggest that we do the finances as part of the meeting, as the latter part of the meeting? And we'll see where we are with time. I don't see we can do it in two minutes here. That doesn't do justice.
Is that fine with counsel? Okay, because it's important. We have to obviously drill down on that, Ann. That works with you, Ann? Okay, wonderful. It's 8:52. Why don't we take an eight-minute recess and we'll convene at 9:00? This workshop's adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.